Mr. Speaker. Governor.
Governor.
Thank you. You're welcome, yourself please. My office. I'd like to ask some questions, please. Thank you. This meeting is not called over. The regular meeting of City Council, City Council of Texas will be held on Tuesday, August 13th, 2:13 at 6:45 PM. City Council, 2:15, South Main Street, City Council of Texas. For the record, my name is President Callejada. I'm a full council tonight. Mayor P. Rodriguez, Council of Navas. Council of Uvalde, Aysca. Council of Niento. Council of Taranas. Council of Valdés. Council of Omen. All present. I agree with Mr. President. You can rise for Mr. President. Mr. President, if you'd like.
Good Lord, we thank you for this great community that you continue to bless it, bless it, and continue to make it an even greater community. Pray for all the citizens within. We pray for our leaders of City Council and commissioners and everyone, Lord God, for your blessing and guidance in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pray that the citizens survive and the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in the history of justice and honor.
Do you want me to move up?
Yes.
Yes? Hello, Councilwoman, Honorable Mayor. My name is Rafa Callejada, and I am part of a community forum committee to renovate the existing HEB. Our goal is to bring Children's Museum and Tivity Center, which will feature a gym, the two courts, sponsor league games, workout clubs, and inside body drill. We also want to include an event center with a commercial kitchen. We see it as a, we see it as being utilized as a place to hold special events such as pizza and rest, breeder parties, and a small venue weddings, all producing revenue for the center. Along with renovations, we would also request the closure of Yale Gang history and connect with the City Council Evergreen. Upon review of the Chamber and Museum Board of E fiscal reports, we as a committee would request the council to reconsider the reallocation formula for the use of the Hotel Office and Seats. Our proposal is to reassess the hot resolution to be $100,000 to the City Council Chamber of Commerce and $75,000 to the Royal Pioneer of General Museum. Our main goal is to bring, as everyone says, pets to beds. Thank you.
Next, please.
Governor, say, what?
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. I have a couple of things on the agenda that we'll talk about. First of all, I want to thank you for supporting the annual back-to-school school supplies. It's a project that I started when I was in City Council with a former City manager. And I hear that tomorrow I'm going to have the annual school supplies, and I'd like to continue those efforts for the median and less portion of City of Pearsall. Also, Council, I have items M, N, and O on your agenda. In the past, the City Council has hardship occasions have wait fees for these individuals that have come before City Council put their names on the agenda to waive the fees for renovations or to try to fix up their retailers due to the fact of handicap or disengaged ownership on these three lots. And I ask for your assistance to reach out to M, N, and O. We've done in the past, like I said, we've done on each street, and we've done it on three streets, and of course, with the approval of the City Council. The other item that I have on the agenda that I want to talk about is item 11A, which I'll be having on your agenda. 11A talks about executive session. We have gone before, when I was in City Council, we've gone before this item over and over and over and over again. Okay? It's illegal. Okay? The only one you can sign contracts is the council approval, council authorization. Okay? At no time do you find minutes or agenda items where the City Council approved the mayor or the city manager or acting city manager to sign any legal agreements with this company. Okay? Also, you will find that they submitted some receipts, okay, that sold very close to $100,000, $100,000 that was not actually worth it was done, okay? They're placed on top of the table, above board, illegal. There's no reason for you to go into executive session and let the citizens of Pearsall listen to this expenditure of $103,000 that they're asking for you to pay. Okay? If you're going to be more picky, M, I, even as I word them out, M, I, then you will see, you will see that you're not obligated to pay the $103,000. Okay? The other item is that on, on June 25th, I had a special council meeting, and there was an item on the agenda to pay SMB, SMB contractors. SMB contractors came before the City Council back in February 24, 2013, okay, to do a Texas Water Development Board grant on behalf of the City of Pearsall. The City of Pearsall, at no time you will see on the agenda, and you will see on the minutes, at no time did the City of Pearsall approve this Texas Water Development Board grant, at no time. But yet, they submitted a bill of $28,000 to the City of Pearsall that who put on the agenda and who forced you all to pay for it, I do not know, but it was illegal, because no time will you find on the agenda for all the minutes where it says that the City Council approved the mayor, the interim city manager, or the city manager to do this for, for the grant we submitted to the Texas Water Development Board. It is totally illegal. I ask the City Council members, okay, to please take no action on this, okay? We'll be forwarding this to higher agencies, not a majority of higher agencies, because this is not right. This is illegal, $108,000, $103,000 that they're going to be asking you to pay, and then also $100,000 that's not going to be paid. Just because it's been paid, and always remember one thing that I learned from the legal council when I was in the City Council, just because majority rule does not make it illegal. Okay? Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Tom Nelson.
Yes, we proposed to, we thought, create a hospital district, and we're proposing to subdivide that into one acre lots. All we needed was just one acre when we first went into purchase, we thought it was a smaller section, but the hospital, we wanted to sell the whole thing, but they've agreed, and so had zoning, so it's okay to subdivide it, but now it's for you. We just wanted to put an office on one corner of it, and that was a doctor servicing by that gave a couple of offices. The hospital has also showed interest that they're looking for some office space for doctors, so that might be something they're looking into. We thought in the last meeting that they may look into finding some of that back to that that we really don't want for us.
Nelson.
Mona, Mona. Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm here tonight to represent the First United Methodist Church and Sunshine Daycare, and we would like to talk about San Antonio Street. We're certainly in favor of it making it one way, but we would like to propose instead of going from east to west, or west to east, that you go east to west. It would benefit the Baptist church school, thus the school bus drops the kids off at their door, and then they come around the corner to Sunshine, and then the bus comes back up San Antonio Street to the west. And when we have funerals, that's the way the procession usually goes, the funeral home comes around with the, with the, parks going north, and then people could leave that way in the west side. And we'd like to think of is that we strike our own stripes, our own side of the street, and recently we've been striked, and we would have to be striking again if you, if you make that change. But we, I don't know what your, your reasoning for making that walk go from west to east and still to east would be a good reason, but we would like to propose that you reverse it and let that one way come to the west instead of east. Thank you.
Nelson.
Is it Honorable, please?
I have nothing, yes, I have nothing, thank you.
Who are you getting, sir?
Paragito, please.
Last person, Ms. Branson.
I just kind of, kind of hurry up today. I just want to second what Mona said. Just a year ago, I believe, the Boy Scouts came to y'all and asked permission to strike the, the parking spaces in front of Baptist church, including the Baptist church and the courthouse. And at that time, I think I'll be able to mention to do it a year ago, and now we're kind of having to check. I agree with it being one way, that really needs to be, there's way too much traffic coming from here. But if you happen to notice, and I'm over there in the quarter all the time, the heavy, the fast traffic is coming from Oak Street going that way. That's the way that people are giving a lot of speed, and it's dangerous, because they are coming fast from Oak Street. The ones coming from the other direction, which would be from the east to the west, that's really not very, the traffic's pretty slow. So if one of your goals is to minimize or to reduce the traffic flow to a safer level, if you, you know, I don't know if anybody's standing out there or studying it, the heavy traffic or the fast traffic is coming from Oak Street across. So I would like you all to consider, since, since the Boy Scouts just took on this and they were approved by the City Council when we were, if we strike it in front of the church. So thank you for your consideration.
Nelson. Do we authorize five action on the dead items? All that will be delivered to City Council and will be enacted by most resolution ordinance. There will be certain special designs. Who are the dead items authorized by the mayor, city manager, SMB, on this great, whatever that is. Okay, numbers, there are two meetings, 2:00, 2:13. If there are no questions.
What, 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 what?
On the one that I voted on, sir?
Yes.
Yes, June 25th, item, it was under item, agenda item A, oh, versus item C, it was the payment for SMB.
About 16, June 25th, with the exception of that one item, the SMB.
Now, Mr. President. Do you recall, or do you know if that payment's in the mail?
I believe it is.
Counsel?
I'd like to return one more, your honor.
Okay, there's motion for to approve the bits for the June 25th, 2013, and July 16, 2013 meetings. There's a second by Council Niento on paper I. I'll call today. Motion carries now. Item six. Unfortunately, unfortunate, very gentleman, supervisor city manager is not feeling well, so he will not be attending to these, so there will be no city manager reporting us. Do you have?
I'll just cover it in your pocket.
Sir?
Just saying in your pocket.
Sure. Do you want to, do you want to?
Yes. Mayor, Councilor, we have N B. Quick update on some of the projects. The USDA will develop a project, which is a longer project, that's on schedule to continue to proceed with that, moving to the Echo acres area, with the sewer line, the well, with them out, have been drilled, they're setting the screens. The street project is a little bit of an issue with, we're still working with the contractors, some of the streets in the Garcia area, we're still not satisfied with the, with the work, and we're still having to work with them to resolve that issue, but I guarantee you that we'll make sure that you get the product, it's, it's all good. Any other questions?
Anything, questions? Yes, sir. Lean on item 7. The speaker's here, I'll see if you can see us, team now. Thank you. I'm watching, item 7. Item eight, Speaker, board, chamber members, resolution 20, all eight, 349. Again, folks, I think, I think, the member, supervisor, not here, but I think that members, you received a copy of the mail. That July has provided for tonight's meeting. And, Mr. Roberts?
Well, basically, what the, what the mail said is that the message from Mr. Tobias is that after reviewing the budgets of both the chamber and the museum, as well as the most effective use of hot tax, staff recommended that hot tax resolution be changed to respect that the chamber be allocated $100,000 and the museum $75,000 for the next fiscal year. Instead of the, the, you know, the resolution in place now, which gives the chamber 30% of all hot tax collected, which in this coming year, we expect to be climbing in dollars. So that would be a decrease to about $130,000 for the chamber. And so what's recommended is that we allocate $100,000 to the chamber and $75,000 to the museum, and not a percentage of the total tax. And that is because the plans for, we like the HEB project and other projects that we need, we need everything.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a warning, we just kept the resolution as it is, and that, do anything with it right now.
There's a motion for, to keep, to make no change of regulations, to reduce 20, 292, but now some of that's on the paper I. I want to close, they, motion carries now. Item eight, we discuss, consider, and approve the many traffic ordinance, 2013, 0527, directing traffic one-way eastward on San Antonio, between Mona Street and Conestry. I think, I think what they refer from this law, or this guy. Sketch. Ask a question. Do you realize that the ordinance that we're trying to amend for the junior capital vending was approved in May, just 2 months ago?
Oh, are we talking about the streets now?
Yep.
Oh, okay. That was approved in May?
Because it was, it was a recommendation of whoever.
Whoever, who was whoever?
I think, I don't know, I don't recall who was here, I hope it's yourself, or somebody, somebody recommended that.
Did they study?
Do you recall?
The council advised me to do a study, which we did, and that was, nobody, nobody at that time made any decision as to east or west. I have at this point no problem with their request of turning it over. It's six one-way, half a dozen another, as far as I'm concerned. Yes, sir.
You have to have it done to get in the paper.
I don't know, Amy would have put it in the paper.
Mr. Mayor Alvarez, that was just a concern, because, you know, the traffic there is very fast coming from Oak Street, people coming to the courthouse, but going the other way is not.
It doesn't really matter to them that evening?
Yes, I know, I know, I'm just.
But, but I was saying, for record, this was approved, this, currently mentioned on this ordinance, was approved back in May, if I can ask.
Oh, I see. But not which direction, or did, was that clear? The direction and?
Probably the opposite, but not even the other way. I haven't.
That's what we're asking, you know, I think that's possible.
There's no problem with it, sir. I don't, I don't foresee any problem. I think your idea is even better.
I'd rather be ordered west to east in May, than republishing it, and then I'd rather the new one east to west. Well, we have a one-way.
Right, and I'm great with the one-way, exactly.
I have the ordinance, it's going the other way. Public flight.
All right, excellent, Mr. President. Members, I have a motion. Motion to make by Mayor P. Rodriguez, to amend, subject for instance, by Councilor Diavía. There is a discussion, there is none on paper I.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Item nine, the new amendment, we discuss, consider, and approve, the question of Pearsall ways, Pearsall end today, duty of pay, and matters towards February, and the abandoned downtown at intersection of Vol, and Monta Street, August 25th to August 31st, 2013, serious money, of any means. organizations.
I am.
Name, your name?
Shirley Alm.
Your husband?
The Rio Can extension office. I received permission from Tech Doc, I'll give that to you, document tomorrow.
I'm sorry, you received permission from Tech Doc?
Yes.
Motion to make by Mayor P. Rodriguez, seconded by Councilor Nito, to approve the reflection of these organizations. Any questions, discussion, there is none on paper I.
Aye.
Item nine, we discuss, consider, and approve, the primary product of migrant deployed subdivision, a plan of 5.2 acres, establishing lots, 1-2 block 1 of migrant deployed subdivision. Property inscription being the re-subdivision of the Apple Square subdivision in Apia, number 1413. Ashtray 46, Pearsall County, Rexacamo, 112B. Property is located at intersection of Ninoona Street and Roosevelt Street, property currently on R1, 7121, District, Mr. Duke, will you have?
Mr. Mayor, Council, last night, the Plano Zonin Helder meeting, all members that were present voted in favor to approve the flat 5 to 0.
If I read the words, direct to your issue. Motion to make to approve the primary, primary product of the ready deployed subdivision. Motion to make by Mayor P. Rodriguez, to pass, and to the Council, on paper I.
Aye.
Item C, same for Inspector Cruz, the primary product of the ready subdivision, a plan of 3.00 acres, establishing lots 1-2, block 1 of the ready subdivision. Property inscription being out of the out dot 32, of the block of East 1411, Ashtray 30, Pearsall County, Texas, 1445, H34. Property is located on 1662, Chabaco, Amo, L5.
Mayor, if I may, item C, D, and E, we're all voting on Plano Zonin Helder meeting, and all members present voted in favor of five, consider, for item C, D, and E.
Motion to make by Mayor P. Rodriguez, to approve the primary product of the capacity of the Council, I've asked both, any questions, discussion, there is none on paper I.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Item nine, we discuss, consider, and approve, the primary product of the Melas, the Vegas, probably LLC subdivision, a plan of 2.97 acres, they came with lot 6, lot 3, and established lots 7, 8, and 9, lot 3 of the Vegas, LLC subdivision. Property's inscription being lot 6, lot 3, general hospital business park subdivision, Pearsall County, Texas, Amo, 14B, property is located at intersection of Medical Drive, Medical Drive, property is currently owned, C3, General.
I'm sorry, Mayor, same, same thing, just put it right. I was recording on last night by Plano Zonin, all members present voted in favor of five, sir.
Motion for. Motion to make by Mayor P. Rodriguez, seconded by Council, on paper I.
Mayor, did you say say hello? Say hello. You're dropping your accent, sorry.
Item nine, we discuss, consider, and approve, the primary, primary, some respects of the low, re-subdivision, a plan of 5.8 acres, 1-2, block 1, and 3 acres established, lots 1, R, a block, some of those subdivisions, property's inscription being lot 1, block 1, most subdivisions, Pearsall County, Texas, all of those, so it's a B, property is located on North Old Street, property is currently owned, C3, General.
Mayor, Council, the Plano Zonin Helder meeting last night, all members present voted in favor of five, zero, to approve that.
Motion to make by Justice, Justice. Make a warning from Rodriguez. Any questions here, none on paper I.
Aye.
Item 9, we discuss, consider, and approve, the primary, the right-of-way, these are my corporate number, coming on the alleyway between Monta Street and West San Antonio Street. That's no action, I would, if that, that yielded appropriate of the purchase of that , the, no action paid. Item 9G, discuss, consider, approve, appraisal of city-owned properties between 10 plus acres, lot 5, block 2, general hospital business park subdivision.
Yes, the city manager's requesting authorization to appraise a number of city-owned properties on which private parties have expressed interest in buying to include the police station, public goods building office, off of Matt Street, and the 78ers north of Stack, and then exit next to the Elon Ford and Center. As it says, there's been interest in people purchasing anybody, as a first step of life for it to be approved.
Oh, do you mean the city, the, the?
Yes.
Is there any reason why not to go with the, the current president?
The appraisal district? Well, there is one, that is one option, but it's, it's usually not, I mean, a private appraisal, or there's, they do the appraisal district, or like, they're not scared, if they have to have it, with the appraisal department.
And what's the interest?
I don't know.
My motion is to not approve city-owned properties, just because it's not been approved, it's already been addressed, people interested, and at this time, we owe, so we can be selling the HEBs.
You're just talking about the appraisal, right? You're not talking about selling it, man?
No, but that would be a first step to keep more of what they're doing.
Do you happen to know what the cost would be, though? Just have to pump it?
Right now, Mr. Tobias is the one that was working on it, but I'm not there, but what they lost would be.
Because we're not talking about, all we're talking about is getting a private appraisal, go out there and, and you go.
As he wants to work, yeah.
My motion is so thin.
There's motion for to not, or to deny the approval of. The, 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 that's right. Right, sir. Okay, we seconded by Council, we have, on paper I.
Aye.
Item H, discuss, consider, and approve, relocation cost of water, as soon as it's right, for the year, not, for the rest.
Mayor, I can, I can. Mayor, Lieutenant Arquero, with S and B. We have completed the sewer line extension on the E and O, and the minor items have to be configured in the waterline extension. But after that, the next step is relocating the private service lines, either separate household, the water is the back, and it's.
I think since it's private service, uh, I understand since it's a private service, I saw private property that has to be done by a licensed plumber. And we don't have a license. I, Mr. Andrew, do you have any?
You got plumbing inspectors?
The licenses that we do carry, we have plumbing inspectors, but they're not state.
It says not state licensed plumber. So initially, we were thinking that the city could do it in-house, but since the city doesn't have a licensed plumber on staff, then I reckon that patient would be to go out and require three days. And really what we're asking here tonight, then, is that the council wishes, is that, um, you know, is consensus on whether or not the city wants to pay for this?
Oh, okay. We're, uh, the council there.
I make a motion.
And we're about to talk about the actual policy.
Okay, the question made by Councilman, uh, approve the location of the water service, so water service lines on the municipal residence. Second by the council, uh, your question here now, I'm here, I.
Aye.
Motion here now.